...the God indivisible who is with you and justice for all.
Well, everyone, please remain standing. I'd ask Pastor Nick Evans to come, please give us a prayer.
Father, we glorify and we thank you for such a blessed day. We thank you, God, for all of these public servants. We ask your blessings to be upon these servants as well as this community. Father, you know where you want to take us. Lord, you know that we trust you and we follow your guidance. We ask your blessings to come in in this session on tonight. Give us what to say and what to do, in Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody keep standing. We have a moment of silence for the victims in Las Vegas. Okay, thank you. Little call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Councilwoman Whiteley.
Present.
Councilman Odin.
Present.
Councilwoman Mitchell.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Williams.
Present.
And Councilman Chisholm.
Present.
We have seven present and we do have a corner.
Oh, we'll do it. Is it on it? Well. Okay, everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
Right here.
Yes.
We need to, we didn't discuss something in orientation, the district wide meeting. We were supposed to pick a new date or talk about that. So we need to put that somewhere in here. I guess we'll put it under, what, that's new business? No, that's old business, really.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Put it under previous business?
Previous.
Previous?
Previous business.
Okay. Add that, that can be A, district wide.
This is for tonight, they want to use this one.
Advisory.
Anybody have anything else to add to the agenda? Take call.
What we, what we decided on in closed session?
We need to vote on that, right? The closed session matter?
What we decided.
Yeah. Yeah.
I got it on as item, I have it as item A.
Item A?
It's going to be item.
Under new business?
Mm-hmm.
Animation.
Yeah. Item A.
And then we're adding under presentations, under D, the services. Anything else?
Where we adding discussion wise?
We did that.
Let me see.
Yeah, that's in the previous business.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda with the add-ons.
Board. You probably move to supportive discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Presentations, we're going to start with a Team Cares redevelopment presentation. Come on up.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to present our case to you. We're here to talk about 25910 Michigan Avenue. It's a piece of property that the city currently owns. And we would like to purchase and redevelop that property.
Why don't you introduce yourselves? I know you, but a lot of folks don't know. Introduce yourselves.
All right, my name is Tony Paul Accella. I'm the CEO of Team Cares, Team Wellness, and the CEO of New Start Construction.
Kim Holman, President of New Start Construction. Hi, everyone, my name is Ashley Seegress and I'm the Vice President. Hi, everyone, my name is Ashley Seegress. I am the Vice President of New Start Construction.
Thanks.
And how all three entities kind of come together is that the main entity, Team Wellness, is a behavioral health, social services.
Slide over, get close to the mic because we're recording.
Sorry. Okay, Team Wellness is a social services, behavioral health company that is dedicated to the rehabilitation of people with severe mental illnesses, people that are recovering with substance abuse. Thank you. And returning citizens and returning veterans. So in rehabilitation processes, we found that we can do a great job clinically, but the piece that was always missing in terms of people being able to... Thank you. Okay. At any rate, the piece that was always missing was jobs. So we felt that it was easier for us as a behavioral health company to become a construction company than for a construction company to become a behavioral health company. As a behavioral health company, we provide all of the services, wraparound services, that our employees or folks that are coming to us need in order to succeed, you know, in vocations. We've chosen the building trades because of the huge needs and where the largest bang for our buck could be in terms of job creation. We have purchased several homes here in Inkster that we are rehabilitating, turning back into the community. But it's not just a matter of purchasing and, you know, selling them. It's not just a construction company. So we have four houses that are currently under construction. But I guess more in line with what we do, we have... Okay, six homes that are currently owner occupied or occupied homes. And we are working with the occupants of those homes. So our purpose is not just to come in, throw people out of their houses, fix them up, sell them for a profit. We want to be a part of the community. With the property at 25910, our intention is to convert it into office space and a little bit of manufacturing training space in the back. We are moving three of my companies into it. Our billing company will be there. Our headquarters for Team Cares will be there. Our headquarters for New Start Construction will be there. So it'll be a total of about 35 employees at the Michigan Avenue site. We believe that we can bring a lot of services here at the Inkster. I think that we can be a huge asset to the community.
I think you earlier told us that you, there's some things like a television studio, a recording studio.
Yes.
Can you hit some of those things that would be actually working out of that building if?
Yes, Relativity Productions produces My Healthy Mind, a television program. That's a quick commercial on Channel 20, noon, Sunday afternoons. And, oh, have you seen it? Thank you. Yes, that is us. And the idea originally started, you know, as advertising. We're trying to think of which way that we could advertise the services of Team and what it is that we wanted to bring out. You know, during our conversation, what we really wanted to do was more of an education, showing that people with mental illnesses can be reincorporated back into the community, live normal, productive lives. You know, at our clinic, we have hundreds of people that have great stories, have overcome huge deficits and are living very successfully. So we started out, let's showcase that. Because every time that mental illness is brought to people's attention, it's usually after some horrific incident, a shooting like yesterday. And it quickly fades from TV, you know, when something else comes up. And what's left in with people is, you know, kind of a bad taste in their mouth about mental illnesses or misconception. So the show was dedicated first to, you know, understanding of mental illnesses, bringing in experts, bringing in people to teach and to show that it touches all of us. We've had Lieutenant Governor Kelly on the show talking about autism, how it directly affected him and his family. His daughter is autistic. We've had Debbie Dingell talking about issues in aging. As we know, John Dingell is getting on in years and things that she wasn't prepared for. John needed a hearing aid, which he found out that's not a Medicare-covered benefit. So little things like that, education. So the show will be produced and shot there and certainly will be at your disposal if you need it for anything. And certainly we could also run a commercial or two about the city of Inkster and the fine things we're doing here.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions?
Yes. Have you contacted any of the other organizations within the city of Inkster who sort of offer the same type of service and see if you all can collaborate?
Well, we work with Starfish now. Okay, Starfish is a children's program. So anytime that there is a need that comes to our attention with kids, we send them over to Starfish. Starfish sends adults to us, so we work collaboratively with Starfish.
Are there going to be actual... This isn't a residential facility.
No.
These people are just getting, like, doctor visit and then?
No, there'll be no clinical or medical services there. It will be just job training. So our intent is to have classroom facilities there, teaching, you know, basic math, basic carpentry, OSHA training, and getting people ready to go out on the job site. There may be some light manufacturing, teaching people how to build windows. It's one of the projects that we're contemplating putting there. Because when you build a window, you know, you use all the skills of a carpenter. You know, cutting angles, how do things come together, different tools, and the mathematics that goes behind it. It'd be a very small operation, again, mostly just for training.
Okay, and the people who are offered this training have some sort of mental deficiency or?
Some that are, that have, that, well...
At the criteria or can just?
No, no, no. It's anyone that has a need, you know, for, you know, for training. So it's open to the community. So if there's someone within the community that wants to develop a skill, learn a trade, they're more than welcome to come to us.
Okay, in reference to your television programming, you realize we have a cable station that we're developing at this present time. Do you have onsite people who do this or is this on offsite?
When you say onsite people, we have a, you know, so it's onsite, so it's a sound studio, cameras. We shoot the, the show is not live. It's taped and we bring it to Channel 20 for distribution. But, you know, we're certainly open to any kind of exposure. So if you have a cable station and we can go live, that is something that we are very interested in doing.
Oh, we, see, we're looking for help from you. We're not giving you.
You want help in putting together a cable station?
No, I'm asking about the personnel you have because, like I said, we're a fledgling organization and we're looking for people who may be able to guide and direct and have experience and have a program on.
Yeah, we've got people that probably could help you on that, okay?
Well, we'll be getting with you.
Okay. Love to work with you, sure, absolutely.
My question is, you're going to be running cycles of the individuals that you're looking at bringing aboard, have X amount come through cycle, there through another set will come in and be another cycle?
Correct. So the intent then is when people are psyched, we're taking, you know, with Team, we learned that there were just so many obstacles to people in their recovery on that, okay? One of the obstacles on it was, okay, do I earn or do I learn? And what we did with, with New Start was we kind of took that away. So this is kind of an earn-as-you-learn type of situation. So the idea is, you know, in theory, you know, to train people, then move them into onsite work on construction. And then as their skill levels move, move up, another wave of people would come in, take their places as the trainees and then move them up. At some point, also in theory, you know, we could build a pretty, pretty good construction company. Not everybody's going to want to move on to some of our competitors or to larger companies. You know, that this may be a safer environment for them, a more forgiving environment working with New Start. So they may stay with us, which gives us also a pretty good-sized, you know, construction company with some very talented people.
I have a question.
Yes.
My Inkster.
The opportunity? You know, for us on it, in order for the program to work, we need places for people to work. We're not going to be able to find jobs for them. So they have to, so they have to work, you know, for us, okay? So the only jobs that we can create are renovation jobs that we have. So we came to Inkster because there was an opportunity to buy houses. And we see that there's more opportunities in Inkster. And the way that Inkster being centrally located, it's a great jumping off point, you know, for our construction team once they're established. Hopefully there'll be more work here in Inkster for them.
Thank you.
Anybody out here?
What's the criteria for someone to get into the program?
A desire.
Desire, so there's no fee before?
No. You don't have to have any skills, we do onsite training. So, I mean, as long as you have, you can put a nail in the wall with a hammer, you know, something small. We have really great general contractors and also people who are certified that are willing to provide training, educate those that are on it, that don't have trade skills.
So how long, how long is the training?
Well, we're in our fledgling, but our program actually will probably run about five years. You know, if someone wants to go all the way to their journeyman's card. They can leave us at any time if there's a better opportunity, once they're stable and they have enough skills. They've already developed not only the training, but they have a resume. Whether it's, you know, six months that they work for us, a year. If there's another opportunity for them, we encourage them. If they stay with us, it takes about five years to get a journeyman's card.
Now, you said they were earned as they learned.
Correct.
So it gives me, how would they be earning? So how's the pay structure?
It starts at $10 an hour. And then based on their skill level as it increases and their value increases to the company, their pay structure will increase along with them. So that they're never going to be stuck at that $10 an hour. And they'll move up, you know, kind of as the structure within, you know, the journeyman's program. And that as they get to a certain level at the apprenticeship, we match the numbers that, you know, the unions are paying. So it may go up to, at some point, $12.50, then $15, and then on and on and on until they get to the master's level, which is 30-some-odd dollars an hour.
And you also mentioned something about manufacturing as well.
I'm sorry?
You also mentioned about manufacturing as well.
Yes.
Have you talked to some of the businesses in the community to where it's employed?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't perfected the product yet. Once we do, then our intent then is to advertise, knock on doors, have salesmen, you know, moving our product all around the city and the state.
Okay. How long have you been in, how long have you been doing this?
The clinical piece or just the vocational piece?
Both.
Clinically, since 1993. I'm not a clinician. I'm an engineer. I bought the company in bankruptcy back in the 90s and 80s. I made my living in the bankruptcy court, buying companies that were, people I'd given up on, that were bankrupt and doing turnarounds. I would keep the companies rather than, you know, just liquidate them and build the companies up. So using the skills, for lack of a better word, that I learned back in those days, learn that, you know, you get to use, you know, assets that people don't see or have overlooked or think of as junk on that. You know, whether it's a house that's been abandoned for five years or whether it's people that have been abandoned out in the street, those are, in our view, kind of diamonds in the rough. And we're fortunate enough to pick them up.
Okay. Thank you.
What is your timeframe for bringing all this to?
Well, the construction in Inkster is already underway. So we have four homes that are under construction. Those should be done probably within the next 60 days.
Those are the ones you have listed on Lehigh and?
Correct. Stanford.
Yeah. Would invite all of council whenever you have some time. If you're in the neighborhood, please stop by the worksite, take a look at what we're doing, progress that we're making. And I think you're going to find that we're going to be returning some very good-looking homes to the community.
What about your Michigan Avenue project?
If we get the approval from city council, we would go to the architect within the next week or so, develop out our plans, hopefully be under construction before the end of the year, ready to open up early spring.
Any questions down there? Kim, Steve? Okay, great. Any other questions? All right, Ms. Fields?
Mayor, I just wanted to add a comment about this group. As part of our Inkster Neighborhood Stabilization Program, this nonprofit group actually replied to that RFQ, if you will. So that's how they were introduced to Inkster, through that opportunity. And of course, that's the program where we are partnering with developers. There are six of them, in order to rehab houses in the city and bring homeowners to the city of Inkster. But they responded to the RFQ. And in one of our meetings, they had been in Inkster and drove around and seen the properties. They actually asked about space for them to bring their companies here. And that's when I brought up the Michigan Avenue address. So I just wanted to add that they were just interested in doing more in our community. And that's how this kind of came up. I mentioned the Michigan address and they looked at it and they fell in love with that, but they also fell in love with Inkster.
All right, thank you. Anybody have anything else, please? All right, we appreciate you for coming, giving the presentation.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, Ms. Pearl?
Contact information.
Division. Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is going to be from Craig Lewis, Parks and Rec's director. This is a presentation on a proposed new park. Is Dan doing the text up? Please.
Say.
Ms. Fields, can you hit the back lights?
Troy.
Good evening, Mayor Nolan, council.
They're still working on it?
Yeah, they're still working on it.
We can get our, all right, we have some elected officials in the House. We can get their reports while you guys are working out the books.
Okay.
Can we flip the lights back on, please? We have our illustrious state senator who never comes to see us anymore because he is big time. Do you have a report for us, sir? He knew I was stinging.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear me in the back?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Appreciate the opportunity to come before council again. It feels like I've seen just about everybody in the last month or so. And appreciate everybody who came out in attendance for my recent town hall meeting in Dearborn Heights. Got to hang out with Councilwoman Mitchell in Lansing this last week. I've got a couple of things I wanted to update the council on that is coming down the pipes in Lansing as we head into the last part of 2017. Some issues that I'm working on, two in particular, deal with, as we all know, the state of Michigan has decided to move forward with the licensing for medical marijuana dispensaries within the state of Michigan. They've established a date of December 15th as the start date for accepting the applications for those facilities. Lara, the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Department, has said that beginning on December 15th, they're asking every dispensary across the state of Michigan to shut down until their applications are approved. The concern that many of us have in that instance is that you're going to be pushing patients, legitimate patients who are in need of that medicine, back to the underground market for upwards of five to six months. Could put them in a dangerous situation and would disrupt the business community, not just here in Inkster, but across the entire state of Michigan. I've partnered up with Senator Rick Jones, he's a Republican from the Lansing area, to develop a temporary license status for any facilities that are operating by December 15th and choose to file their application with the state of Michigan, seeking approval for that license. The temporary piece would say that if you've filed by, or if you're operational by December 15th, if you file with the state, you will remain open until the state of Michigan decides what your fate is. If the state of Michigan comes back and says your application is approved, you get to continue on business as usual, just as you have been for the previous five or six months. If the state of Michigan comes back and says that you are denied, in that case, you would be denied and you would have to close your facility. We introduced that legislation last week. It was referred to the Committee on Health Policy and we're expecting a hearing and hopefully a vote on that legislation here within the next few weeks. The second issue that I'm working on right now in conjunction with a number of my colleagues is the ban the box legislation. This is legislation that hasn't been introduced since 2013 that would remove the question as to whether or not somebody is a felon when it comes to their application process. We know that that disqualifies so many people who would otherwise be incredibly qualified for those job opportunities right out the gate. This is action that we've taken at the federal level for a few years now. It's something that we want to bring again here to the state of Michigan. And the final thing, that this is me personally that I'm working on at the state level, is rectifying the still, I think, unresolved issue of driver's responsibility fees here in the state of Michigan. Driver's responsibility fees, as you will recall, were implemented under Governor Granholm as what folks thought would be a deterrent to folks committing additional vehicular infractions, if you will. And what you find is it doesn't matter how much of a fine you give somebody. If they don't have the money to pay, they ain't going to pay it. And so you could give them a $5 fine, you can give them a $500 fine. It does not matter if you don't have the money to pay it. And so we have 300,000 people in the state of Michigan right now who do not have access to their driver's license, who cannot get that driver's license to get to and from work, play, their family, simply because of this driver's responsibility fee. In 2014, my last year in the House of Representatives, we actually came together in a bipartisan way and said, you know what, this is a huge mistake. Anybody who has this problem understands the challenges that comes along with it. And the legislature got rid of driver's responsibility fees in 2014. What they didn't get rid of were any of the fines or fees associated with individuals who already had that on their record. As a result, today, 300,000 people still don't have access to the driver's license. We're working on an amnesty program, if you will, that would essentially have the state of Michigan come in and just wipe all of that clean. The state of Michigan, again, this is money that they're not receiving in the first place. It's money that they were hoping to receive, but they're not getting and have not for three years now. But in the process, we're denying folks the opportunity to get into a vehicle and commute around the state. And so we're working on not only moving into the second phase of the repeal of those fees, but also, or the repeals of the driver's responsibility fees, but also eliminating any existing fees that are currently on someone's record so those 300,000 residents can go off and get their driver's license. The biggest issue that we have coming before the Senate and the House this fall is the issue of auto insurance. I tell people point blank, if you come into my district, Detroit, Dearborn Heights, Garden City, Inkster, and Redford Township, you see a very disturbing trend as you move throughout the district. As soon as you go east of Telegraph and as soon as you go south of Cherry Hill, you see a massive spike in the auto insurance rates. I think it's no secret as to why that is. Redlining is probably one of the biggest causes and factors behind it. And so we have bipartisan groups, two bipartisan groups in the legislature today who are advocating for changes to the auto insurance system that we have here in the state of Michigan. One group is a bipartisan group, Democrats and Republicans in the House and the Senate, who are putting forward plans to change how much hospitals can charge for certain procedures that they perform under private insurance, auto insurance and what have you. It includes changes and the elimination of those factors that go into redlining. I recently changed from USAA to AAA insurance. And they printed out my report as soon as I filed. And it said, your zip code's 48127, you have a bachelor's degree, this is your credit score, not as high as I wanted it to be. And these are the factors that go into why you have that rate. And when you explore those factors even further, you realize that they take into consideration even more things. Your credit score, your level of education, in some cases, your gender. And so what you find is disproportionately communities of color paying rates above and beyond their suburban counterparts. My argument has always been that it doesn't matter who you are, it doesn't matter where you're from, what your zip code is, what your level of education is. Everybody in the state of Michigan is entitled to the same level of coverage for the exact same price. That should be the starting point of that conversation. The other bipartisan group is led by Mayor Duggan and the Speaker of the House of Representatives. Their plan would change what the level of coverage is for folks here in the state of Michigan if you chose to opt into it. So there's something... So the starting point is the fact that you have a choice. You could continue to have the unlimited coverage, you could opt for $500,000 in lifetime coverage, $250,000, what have you. My response to that always is that I can always give you something for cheaper if it's a worse product. And the question that we need to ask ourselves is that if we have individuals who are not driving because they cannot afford auto insurance, at what point is the tipping point to where you go from being an uninsured driver to an insured driver? If I go to my folks, I was at a block club meeting in Detroit this week. I spoke to a young gentleman, 25 years old, works for Ford Motor Company, pays $550 a month in auto insurance, more than his car note. He wants to be driving clean, he wants to be doing this, but this is money that we're taking out of his pocket. And so we've said to him, you know, the choice may be there, but again, if you opt for $250,000 of coverage, $25,000 of that is for the emergency room. The rest of it's for post-acute care. And it's not just for you, it's for your entire family. And if you've been in the hospital recently or had a loved one in the hospital recently, you recall how quickly you burned through $25,000. And so it's this really unique sort of fight that's gearing up in the legislature where we have folks like L. Brooks Patterson, for all of his hatred and bigotry, is coming out in opposition to these changes because he just spent two months in the hospital and wrapped up $2 million in charges. And so you've got Brooksie baby going heads up with Mike Duggan, and we just get to sit back and watch the fireworks. Again, my opportunities to advocate on this issue have always stemmed from the place of, it doesn't matter who you are, where you're from, you're entitled to the same level of insurance for the same price as anybody else. That, to me, should be the starting point, and you can negotiate from there. Funding opportunities in his state of the city this year, the mayor talked about tasking me with trying to bring some additional dollars back home from Lansing. I'll tell you that we recently had a meeting with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation talking about how we can lure additional businesses within to, within the city of Inkster, provide them with the necessary incentives that they need to move their business operations into the city, and how we can sweeten that pot by ensuring that they're able to not only build their products here in the city, but also that the city would have the resources to purchase those products that could be beneficial to the residents as well. I'm going to close really quickly and then open it up to any questions. I'm sure I went far over the time that was allotted to me, but as the mayor said, I got to come around and make up for last time. Unfortunately, we do not have any movie theaters in my entire district, all five of my cities. I've got no movie theaters. And I've been talking about hosting a free movie for veterans in November, around November 12th. And AMC 20 in Livonia has recently agreed to host this event. We're going to be pushing the details out to you all as council members, to the Parks and Rec Department and to our seniors and folks, to invite them out to just a free movie for veterans the day after Veterans Day. Free popcorn, free pop, AMC Livonia 20 is going to be providing that to everybody. And then finally, just had a meeting this morning with Nise Champagne over at a Big B Coffee about putting together a trip to the Capitol for our senior citizens in December. We're going to finalize the date, we're going to take care of the bus, we're going to take care of the shirts, the lunch, the tours, the pictures, you name it. But it's going to be in December, Christmas at the Capitol is what we're calling it. And again, we just had the meeting on that today, but just wanted to put it on everybody's radar so that as we move down the pipes, you have questions or concerns about it, just pick up the phone and ask, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions or concerns that you have right now.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Part of the dispensaries, those owners, do they, have they been given notice to what their timidity is to reapply for state license?
Yes. So Lara, under the Licensing and Regulatory Affairs Department, we have the Medical Marijuana Licensing Board, and they put out directives to all the operators or to the growers, if you will, saying that by December 15th, you need to shut down until you have a license approved, or you will compromise whether or not your application will be approved by the state of Michigan. So if you want to keep your facility open and take the chance with the state of Michigan, which I would not advise, folks have the right to do that. But folks who want to have the opportunity to go in front of the licensing board and get approved, they're playing it on the safe side, and they're shutting down their entire facilities.
So can they go and like, apply like tomorrow?
December 15th is when that opens.
Did I understand, can I ask a question? Did I understand that there's move to pass something to allow some of those operators to stay open or?
He's with them.
So the legislation that we introduced last week is saying that if you're open and operational by December 15th, and if you submit an application to the state for licensing approval, you would be allowed to remain open until the licensing board makes a determination as to whether or not your application is approved. And so that would be, in essence, establishing a transition license between the two.
The likelihood of success of that legislation?
I will tell you, I mean, nothing's a done deal in Lansing until it's a done deal. But I'll tell you, we introduced it bipartisantly, we have bipartisan support in the Senate. We had a conversation with the governor's office on Thursday about, you know, again, whether it's Lara or even the state police or some folks. Lara is saying that they're simply doing what the law is telling them to do, and that if it wasn't the legislature's intent to shut down every facility across the whole state for six months, then the legislature needs to tell them differently. The challenge, you know, just inside-baseball bit of it, the Senate's always fighting with the House over something. And so we may be able to get it out of the Senate, and then the House may say, it's a Senate bill, we don't want to take it up. So good luck and have a nice day. But as it goes now, I say that I feel relatively confident about the level of support that we'll be able to build in the Senate before we get it to the House.
How do you know whether the commissioners who get the final say will still hold that against you even if a temporary license is issued?
That's a good question. And so when we talked to the owners of the facility, and we said to them, the intent would be to allow you to remain open so that you don't have this, you know, as a scarlet letter against you when your application goes through. They said if that's truly what your intent is, you need to expressly say that in the legislation. Outcome versus intent are always two very different things in Lansing. And so if our intent is to say you can remain open and not have this count against your application, we need to have a sentence in the legislation and in the law that very clearly says that, so they can't be used against them.
But the group of cities, they can continue to grow.
That's correct.
On the auto insurance issue?
Yes, sir.
That you explained, you talked about the boundaries, I think you said, east of Telegraph, south of Cherry Hill. My question is, maybe it's just me, but would that be considered being discrimination?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the answer is yes. I mean, I mean, listen, I mean...
I guess my question is, you know, how do we allow that to get to that point?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you exactly how we allow it to, because the legislature does not have the political courage to stand up to the insurance industry in this state. I mean, you found a very soft way of saying it. I mean, the reality is, when you go into the predominantly black parts of my district, that is where you see this spike.
Right.
In auto insurance rates. And so, you know, the last couple of years, I don't have the exact date or time off the top of my head, but the NCAA did file suit, pardon me, NCAA, NAACP, filed suit against the auto insurance industry claiming a racial bias and a racial discrimination component in their rates. One of the higher courts kicked that back, saying that you did not have a racial basis for arguing that motion in front of the court. And so I think they're trying to come at it in a roundabout way now, if we try to go in a legal direction. But I will tell you, the state of Michigan, when it comes to what we can or can't tell the insurance industry, we, the legislature, has full autonomy over setting whatever those criteria are, or whatever criteria are permissive in setting those rates. And so the problem is, again, I'm not trying to get overly political at a city council meeting. We know what the majorities are in Lansing. All you have to do is look at the campaign finance reports of those committee chairs of the insurance committee, and you see a whole lot of commas and a whole lot of zeros from all the insurance companies in the state of Michigan. And so when we say to other legislators, we need to do something to provide relief to the residents across the state of Michigan when it comes to auto insurance, they are very quick to turn a blind eye and a deaf ear because somebody is greasing their palms and lining their pocketbooks, and they're not in any, any expediency, if you will, to try and hurry it along. The fact that you're allowed to set, to use a credit score, a zip code, a gender, a level of education, these things have nothing to do with whether or not you're a good driver.
Right, right.
Okay? And so all we, as the state of Michigan, have to say is, you can't use those as criteria anymore.
Right.
And the other thing that we're concerned about is, folks are saying they want to put in a mandatory decrease in what the rates are. So, you know, 30% decrease in the rates across the board. The question then becomes, for how long? Because if you say it's a mandatory 30% reduction for two years, well, year three is going to be a whole lot of hurt for a lot of people. Insurance companies are always going to get what they're going to get. There's a reason all them big buildings and big stadiums are named after these insurance companies. And so the legislature needs to have the guts to look them in the eye and tell them they're wrong, and to do what's in the best interest of the residents.
But we don't have anybody that want to take the stand to do that.
We do have people that are willing to do that. What we don't have is enough people who are willing to do that. Lansing, as you know, is a numbers game. 56 people needed to pass a bill in the House, 20 people needed to pass a bill in the Senate. Individuals like myself and my fellow Democrats, we have 11 of 38 in the Senate, and we have, I think, 45 of 110 in the House. If you want to see different results, you got to have a different legislature.
Got you. All right, anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Going back to marijuana.
Yes, ma'am.
Medical marijuana. What are the qualifications on getting a license? I mean, are the ones that have the dispensaries open, are they entitled to have their application put before another person, or how does that go?
No, as far as I understand, it's a first-come, first-served basis in terms of submitting the application. Again, December 15th being the start of when they receive those applications. But again, the department said that if you want to put that application in and you want to increase the likelihood of it being approved, you need to be shut down by that date. And so individuals who choose not to shut down by that date and put in the application under the current statute, they would be in risk of not getting approved by the state of Michigan.
You know, looking on all of that that's going on now with the medical marijuana, and it's more than what you and I are sitting here talking about. It's a lot of money to be made. And I do know that once they start doing this, I don't know for sure, but we're going to see the outcome. A lot of low men, low people, may not get their licenses, because the people up top is going to get them. And that's why I'm afraid it's going to happen. It's going to cut out the low man, who, you know, this ordinary guy.
Yeah, I think that's legitimate.
And I think that, that's like, we got to wait and see what happens, but I think that's, that's what's going to happen. That's my personal. And going back to the insurance, when you talk about the rates, it's been years and years and years we have been trying to get something passed. And as far as the zip code, they've been doing that for years. They even do that on car loans. You know, the rates, you know, the rates that you pay go by zip code. So I'm hoping that one day we can get that resolved because it's only affecting African-American districts.
Sure.
And the people who do not have insurance, we are paying for them. But a lot of residents don't know, once you have a person that turns 18 in the state of Michigan, they should be in a pool, whether they have a car or not, they should be in a pool to pay insurance. It's something that they don't tell people. So in the event that a person is 19 or 20, get ready to get a new car, they're going to put them in this high insurance rate because they didn't have any. So it's a lot of information that we need to get out to people in regards to insurance. And like you said, what does it matter? As long as you have a good driving record, that should be the only factor that's paying insurance.
I agree. You know, and the other thing too, when you talk about an uninsured driver, the question that I've always asked folks is, you know, what is the threshold to move somebody from being an uninsured driver to an insured driver? If I'm not buying auto insurance because it's $6,000 a year, will I buy it if it's $5,000 a year? I would say no. Would I buy it if it's $4,000, $3,000? At what point is the tipping point where somebody is willing to go from being an uninsured driver to an insured driver? It can't just be tinkering around the edges, I'm going to save you 500 bucks, $1,000 bucks. It needs to be a substantial reduction in that rate. And I remind my Republican colleagues that, like, that's a Republican principle. You can expand the base and lower the rate. If you increase the number of people who are insured, you can lower what the overall premiums are for everybody across the board, which is sort of what you were just speaking about for the 18-year-olds. So sometimes it's frustrating having to remind Republicans what it is they actually believe because they tend to forget from time to time.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
Well, I just have a question in regards to what my colleague was saying about the age. You know, before you turn 25, your rates are sky-high. And then once you turn 25, they take a dive. But when you're working for businesses that are like self-insured, or maybe not self-insured, where they have their entire fleet that is insured, and there's really no change in price because their vehicles are insured regardless of who drives them, how does that factor into there? You know, because if they're under 25 and they're driving, and the rates are not high for this business, but just your own personal vehicle is high, is there anything in there that could level that out across the board?
So I'll tell you, I don't have an answer to that off the top of my head. I'd have to look into it and get back with you, councilmen. And you talked about, again, the rates when you're under 25, sky-high, we like to see a little dip when we turn 25. Unfortunately, seniors, once they get into their 60s, they see a spike in their rates as well, too. And so one of the components that people are talking about right now is, is there a way, if once you are on Medicare and qualified and on Medicare, you've got your medical benefit there, and you're also paying for a medical benefit on the auto insurance side? And is there a way to say you won't have to purchase the medical side on the auto insurance because you are covered? That could save seniors, in some cases, if you have a comprehensive plan where your PIP is 40% of your coverage, you can see a 40% reduction in the rates. If it's a basic plan where it's 80% of your coverage, you could see upwards of an 80% reduction. And so, you know, we've been talking, again, about what opportunities, what avenues we can open up, particularly for seniors. Haven't heard the conversation yet about other young folks or being a part of that business, a part of that fleet, and being insured as a group. So I'd have to follow up with you on that to get you an answer.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, is that it?
No.
Ooh.
No.
Is there ever an opportunity for citizens to come to Senate hearings on issues, for example, insurance? My thinking is, since Inkster, and I'm telling you, I've been at AAA a long time, I went to an office, this is before automation, to pay my bill, on the wall was a map. Guess where the red line was?
Oh, yeah.
Literally, I saw it. That was the day before we could take, pull a camera out and take a picture. But what is it that we, as citizens, can do to, well, we have a different kind of legislature, but what can we do to raise their anxiety about the kinds of things they're doing, especially to communities of color?
Sure.
Can we come sit in a hearing room, or can we ask to testify, or?
Absolutely. So just like your council meeting here, every one of the committee hearings in Lansing is public. Anytime there's testimony being taken on legislation, any citizen can fill out a card, as I imagine you do here, and they can come before the entire Senate committee, whether it's health policy, insurance, whatever it may be, they can provide testimony. And I always tell folks, too, on issues like this, where, you know, I'm your Senator, Representative Jones is your state rep, we're in full agreement on this issue with the folks up here in the community, you don't need to waste your time talking to us. We can point you in the direction of who it is we need to go talk to. And I'll say that I have not seen a coordinated effort to get citizens in front of legislators to talk about this issue in particular, but I think is very helpful. Because again, when you humanize something, it becomes all the more difficult to stand in opposition to it. It's easy for Lansing folks who are from western Michigan, the upper peninsula, northern lower Michigan, who don't have any communities of color in their districts, to say, doesn't affect me, not an issue. If we bring the issue to them and say, you know, it's not affecting folks over here, it's affecting me, Connie Mitchell, and I'm here to say hello to you and explain to you my situation, I think that does carry some weight. And so if you want to talk about finding ways to coordinate those efforts, I'm more than happy to do that. If folks wanted to look at what the session schedule is like, sign up for alerts on when the hearings are. The website is the same for everything, legislature.mi.gov. You can look at every legislator, every bill they've introduced, everything that's passed, not passed, what the committee schedules are, the budget, going back indefinitely. So legislature.mi.gov is the best place to get that information.
And ladies and gentlemen, it does work. I was in Lansing on this past Wednesday for our sorority's AKA Day at the Capitol, and we were informed then about the yellow pad. And we just, some of the sororities took a strip, a piece of paper off the pad, put who they wanted to talk to, and what the issue was, they got it to them, and some of the senators actually left the floor to come out to talk to the citizens. So it does work, we just have to learn how to do it.
Yeah, and the pad is great, too, because, you know, mostly we're excited when the community comes to the Capitol. You know, only legislators and their staff are allowed on the Senate floor while it's in session, and so... in session, and so, if you fill out that sheet of paper, you hand it to the sergeant-at-arms there, and he walks onto the floor and takes it to whoever you wanna talk to, and, uh, if they wanna come out and have a chat, then they do so, so.
One other thing. You do?
Oh, I'm done.
Oh, okay. There?
Hold on.
Excuse me.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Um, one other thing, I would like you to reiterate and put the onus where it belongs, that you need to vote for people who have your interests at heart.
End of that.
We need to vote in droves, and we have not done that. So, if you have not put in the work, you can't expect the money.
Right.
And that's what we need to do. We need to get whatever is necessary to get these people to realize that voting does work, but it has to work in unison.
Yeah, and, you know, at the risk of stirring up any trouble or drama, I'll say, I don't think that has been any more clear to my district and my community than it has the last ten months or so, that elections have consequences.
Yes.
And I will tell you, in the insurance issue in particular, prior to two thousand and ten, when Democrats did hold a majority in the Michigan House of Representatives, we passed sweeping changes to auto insurance on a yearly basis. And then, it went to the Senate, where there has not been a majority, a Democratic majority, since before I was born, uh, in nineteen eighty-three. And so, uh, you can get things out of half of the legislature, but if you're not able to get them through the other side, then it's a challenge. And so, again, the elections have consequences. We see folks, uh, who stand in opposition to wanting to increase the number of folks participating in elections, and they always find new and improved ways to try and suppress that vote and turn people away from the voting booth.
Exactly.
Yeah, and again, they wouldn't be making those decisions, they wouldn't be passing that legislation if they weren't in power. So, it's frustrating, because we say it every two years, elections have consequences, you have to get out and vote, and then you look at what the turnout is, and you say, "Gosh."
Yeah.
It's like, nobody listened.
And if it wasn't important that you vote, they wouldn't be going through all these machinations to change the gerrymen districts and everything else. So, they're frightened of you coming together and putting that vote into one basket.
And hopefully, on the gerrymandering side, and I apologize, Mayor, for going so long, hopefully, the issue of gerrymandering was, is going to appear on the ballot next year for folks to vote on, to take that authority away from the legislature and give it to an unelected, nonpartisan entity, who's just gonna try and look and do clear and contiguous lines.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Albin.
I just wanted to add to what was just said, because I've heard that some of the legislators from the northern part of the state and the western part say that they don't, they could care less about some of us downtown, because we don't vote anyway, so.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
And that is so important, that's important that I was about to say. It is very important that we, as Inkster, can show a good voting record in addition to our presence in here. We could be voting, I think we would have a lot of good votes.
I agree.
All right, well, thank you. We appreciate you coming, coming more often.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
No problem. Craig, will go ahead and do that presentation?
Yes, sir. Hi. Lights. Can you hit the lights for me, Will? Yeah. That's good. Um, good evening, everybody. Um, Miss Shockley, how you doing? All right. Um, Gabe Henderson in the Middle Park Manor Block Club, um, this is for you. All right. The project overview, administration is proposing a new playground at Parkwood Park. This project will help enhance the offering of recreational activities in the city, will give residents and surrounding community a neighborhood park that is previously removed, that was previously removed. That park was there, um, until about ten years ago? Twenty years ago, wow. Um, that is where, um, Parkwood School used to be, and they tore it out. Um, so, we're gonna, we're proposing to bring that there. Um, the location, like I said, is at the old Parkwood School. Currently, the location had, um, is no nearby playground, activity, equipment. The nearest park or playground is at Bel Air Park, which is approximately nine blocks away, um, on, near Cherry Hill and Avondale, between Cherry Hill, Avondale area. Um, this is, this is the park, uh, the layout of the park, um, on Parkwood Street. You can go ahead, Darren. So, coming off of Jeffrey Lane, the entrance will be right off of Jeffrey Lane. You come in, you have a gazebo, a pit, and then a playscape area. This is the first phase of the playground, um, area. Um, there's more property back in the back, in the corner, um, that in the second phase, we're gonna try to do a dog park, um, in the second phase of the project. So, I'm gonna show you some nice pictures. You can go ahead, Darren. This is all the playground equipment that, that we got, um, at a really good deal. Um, keep going, Darren. It'll make the park look really nice. Now, the timeline for this project, um, we will purchase the equipment now, um, to take advantage of the sale, uh, the sale pricing discounts that we got, um, which was almost fifty-six percent off. The vendor stored the equipment during the winter, um, for no charge to us, and then the equipment will be installed in the spring of next year, once the weather prevents. Um, the total estimated cost of the project is about forty-four thousand, um, that's with the discounts and labor, excavating of the property and installation of, um, the equipment. Costs would come out of the Parks and Rec Fund, FY seventeen-year fund balance is estimated at about two hundred and forty thousand. This project could be funded and still leave the fund balance with sufficient fund balance as required by the fund balance policy. And so, um, that's how we would actually fund the, fund the project. Got him, Miss Shockley? All right. All right. Um, you can turn the lights back on, Will. If there's any questions that you may have?
I don't know.
Well, he said that it'll come out of his budget, Parks and Recs, for, um, this, this year.
Yep, FY seventeen.
So, they have a fund balance of about two hundred and forty thousand, so that would bring it down to a little under two hundred.
They have a budget? I feel it's all about.
She was asking what they have, what were you asking?
She, I think she's asking about the fund balance. There's a lot of people have.
So, so, as, um, Council is aware, there's the Parks and Rec Fund, which is separate from the general fund, and that fund is, is, um, is funded through the millage on the property taxes. And so, um, all, you know, most, most of, most all of the Parks and Rec operations, salaries and operations for the rec center and other items are funded out of the Parks and Rec Fund, that's, and that budget is approved by Council. The projected, uh, year-end fund balance for the fiscal year they ended on June thirtieth of this year, we're estimating that there would be a fund balance of $240,000. So, this project wasn't included in the budget that you all approved for the current budget year. In order to fund it, we would have to take it essentially out of the existing fund balance. And the point that Craig made is that, with the, with the estimated fund balance, we could, uh, pay for this project and still have money remaining in the, um, in the, uh, fund balance for the Parks and Rec Fund.
Okay, obviously, I'm confused here, because I thought the millage money was for, um, different activities, things of that nature.
It is, it is. Well, it is to go for, um, activities associated with Parks and Recreation within the city of Inkster. So, it's an allowable, uh, expense up under the millage that was approved by the voters.
It's okay to use millage money?
That's, that's what you're saying. I just know we did it before and got bad trouble.
Well, I mean, you guys want a park, we have a proposal for a park. Will that come to us as a budget amendment, or will it just be an item that the Council votes on?
Yeah, we could, we could present it, um, because it's a, um, you know, one singular contract, we could, uh, present it to Council, um, at the next meeting for, for their approval and include it in the, uh, forthcoming budget amendment, number one, that'll be coming later this fall.
Okay. So, so will there be funds paining to do other types of activities for Parks and Recreation?
Correct.
Do you have that part of the plan?
We, uh, we do not, you know, so, the, the budget that was approved did include some capital expenditures primarily for the recreation center. Um, so, at this point, we, we don't have, um, any specific plans for the fund balances. You know, we're required to maintain some of those monies, uh, in the fund balance, and it was, at the time that the, that the budget was adopted, we didn't know that the Wayne County delinquencies were gonna come back as positive as they did. So, that was one of the reasons why the budget, uh, why the fund balance tended to be higher than we were initially projecting.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, I'm, I'm glad to see this happening, because it's been needed for a good period of time. It's one that's about, there's other things going on, other sections of the city that could also benefit.
Oh, I'm sure.
This is my question, there are fifteen other parks in the city of Inkster. Now, this one is getting a $44,000 makeover. Are there any plans?
Can I speak? Can I speak?
Sure.
Um, so, currently, currently, I'm working on three, two other projects, um, that I'm working on with the MDNR, um, and they're, and it's to fix up some of the parks that we currently have.
MDNR?
Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
Okay, okay, I know them.
And there, um, so, those parks are, I mean, we have, um, Kennedy Park, which we're, we're proposing to turn it into a soccer and football field, a complex, where we have multiple football fields, 'cause we have multiple Little League football programs here in the city, um, that they can utilize that park, um, for practices and their games. Um, and then at Dozier, um, the tennis courts at Dozier, um, we're gonna get those done, and then we're gonna put a track, a walking track, a trail around the property of Dozier, and a fitness park in the back. So, if you guys have ever seen a fitness park, it's like they have exercise equipment outside, so you can walk around the park, and also, um, exercise, too. So, so that's what we're working on right now. So, those are two parks. And if, if you guys take a, look at our master plan, that was a part of our master plan, is to work inside-out. So, we're gonna work Dozier, 'cause that was the nucleus, and then we're gonna get a, a park in, in each quadrant of the city. So, we got, I'm working on Kennedy, Dozier, then we're gonna have Westwood, um, Wheatley, and then, uh, Lamont. So, those are the four parks, and they're all in proximity and walking distance of the communities that they will serve.
What about Manor Park?
What's up?
It's in my district, it's Manor Park.
That tot lot? Yeah, it's a tot lot. So, we're, I mean, those.
Need some refurbishing?
Yeah, yeah. Bel Air Park does, too. Um, there's, so, so, we need, the city, I mean, the parks, like she said, there's fifteen parks, sixteen with Dozier. So, I mean, we, we got a lot of work to do, but gotta start somewhere.
I'll ask this question, too, if I may. Why do we keep putting all this money in the Wheatley?
We're not putting any money in the Wheatley.
We haven't put any money in the Wheatley.
Not lately.
I would.
That was the last, that was the council before us.
Right.
They decided to renovate Wheatley, named it after Tyrone Wheatley, get him involved in it, so they allocated that money. We haven't done anything, so, we haven't put one penny in the Wheatley.
So, he just mentioned Wheatley in his list.
Oh, he was just talking about a park in each quadrant of the city, that basically the biggest park in each quadrant.
Right. The biggest park.
Why did you choose Lamont Park instead of King Park?
Because King, King needed way more work, and there's nothing there. Everything was taken out of King, everything, even the lights, they stole, they took the lights from the park.
Okay, now, let me ask this, the, the playground or baseball, uh, court that was behind Park Side, on that one side, is that part of King Park, or was that just part of, was that part of the Park Side?
That was, that was, that was part of King Park.
Okay. Um, so, are we going to someday look at?
Other parks?
Yeah.
Yes.
'Cause I, I know you think about, we talk about King Park, you think about the baseball diamond, you know, I'm thinking about the.
Everything.
Where the kids are over there playing.
Correct. Right, Kennedy, too, 'cause you know, at Kennedy, they had tennis courts, they had a basketball court, so, like, each park will have different phases, just like this park that's proposed here will have a phase two with a dog park. Kennedy Park will also have picnic area and a walking trail around it as well. But, we have to do it in phases, because we don't, we're asking people for money.
I mean, as you all know, we can't do them all at one time.
Right.
So, we're going to move around the city, rebuild our parks, 'cause our residents want us to do it. So, I know everybody's in their district wants their park done, we're gonna get to them all, but like, maybe we do one or two a year, we, next year, we're gonna apply for more grant money.
Correct.
Do a couple more parks. We're gonna get, it's gonna get done, and, of course, we have to stay on the Parks and Recs guy, but we have to keep finding funding sources, so we can get all this done. But, it's, it's all part of the, the master plan.
The, the last thing I'd like to say, because it is my district, is that the Little Park Manor, um.
Block Club.
Block Club?
Block Club has been interested in dealing with seeing changes made, to the extent that not only them, but other people in the area, basically have input, will be a part of what's going on, what's happening over there. So, it, it, it's like, they will be involved, and you won't be out there by yourself. And I could basically say that, 'cause they've been talking to me about it for a while.
Me, too. Since I've been here, three years, right, right, Ms. Henderson? Three years? Yeah, all right.
Hey, don't start no, no town hall meeting.
Right. All right, is it, that's it?
So, we can't, we, we're not supposed to do it. All right, is that it? Anybody have any questions up here?
Just wanted to mention something that might also be a possible funding source for renovating some of these parks in the future. Um, when I was at a training session last week, uh, that was put on by MD, uh, MEDC, they mentioned that they have a crowdfunding program now, uh, where they will match at a hundred percent, whatever the community kicks in, so, they double it, and that might be something worth looking into, too.
Oh, yeah.
That's great.
Great news.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for your presentation. If you wanna ask a question, typically, you have to come to the orientation meeting, and then we open it up to the entire body. Sometimes we venture off, you know, when I'm out of order. Um, but I wanna get back to other elected officials, we, uh, our state reps just walked in, anybody, do you wanna update anybody on anything?
He's giving a proclamation to the staffs. Promises, yeah.
Huh?
He's here for himself.
I mean, you have, after the presentation, but do you wanna update us on any legislation?
I mean, well, good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration, citizens. I heard that, uh, the Senator was here earlier, he had a, a, a strong presentation, and so...
A long presentation.
A long presentation, and so, I'm pretty sure that he covered everything, and so, I'm gonna go and, go and sit down until the second part comes.
Mary McLendon from Glenn Anderson's office.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, to the Chief Financial Officer, and, and the clerk, and all the fine citizens of Inkster. It's a pleasure to be in the city of Inkster, and I just wanna say, the state rep got out of that report, didn't he? He was very diplomatic. But, uh, I bring you greetings from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner, Glenn Anderson, and I want you to know that the county now has a balanced budget. It went into effect on October the first, and it ends, uh, September the thirtieth of next year. So, we're happy about that, I knew that they would have a, a balanced budget in a timely fashion. Also, I want you to know, uh, that the, the coffee hours are back in progress, and in Inkster, it's at the library, and it's the second Monday of every month at twelve noon, okay, and all are welcome to attend, all of the council, as well as the residents, are welcome to attend. Also, you all know about the jail project, and the jail is coming along real well, the county is negotiating with the city for that property on Grashen, and it is anticipated by December, there will be a strong report on what's happening with those negotiations with those negotiations and the Mr. Dan Gilbert's contract, which is $520 million. So we're staying tuned to what's happening. As soon as that information gets to the commission, that information will be shared with the district. So you can stay tuned to that. You will be informed as to what's going on as soon as that information is available. Also, the commissioner on November the 18th is sponsoring a Make a Senior Smile event and is to cover the citizens in the district, which is Inglewood, Garden City, and Westland. And if you're interested in volunteering, you bring your own rake. But you come to the Maplewood Center on November the 18th from 8:00 a.m. until noon. You come to the Maplewood Center, which is in Garden City, and you'll be dispatched from that location to wherever you'll be going, to whatever senior's home to rake their leaves. And then they'll be smiling after that, okay? Now, that's for seniors that are in need because some of these seniors are in good shape. They can rake your yard, okay? But it's for those that are in need. And if you're interested in volunteering, you can contact the commissioner's office at 313-224-8855. And bring your own rake again so that you'll be able to rake. We'll provide bags and all the other things that you need and we will have the addresses for which you will be going to rake the leads for. Also, in the city of Inglewood, there's been a request by a couple of the council ones, council persons, I'll put it that way, to look at the sidewalk on Inglewood Road, okay? By the Twin Towers. And the county's going to do just that. They will take a look at that, okay? And to see what, if anything, can be done by the county. And your DPW director will be a part of that, okay? The commissioner may be there as well as the Department of Public Services from the county will go and take a look at what that sidewalk need is. Not saying they're going to do it, but that review is going to be there to see what needs to be done by the county or can be done by the county. And hopefully that will work out real well for the citizens of Inglewood. We'll stay tuned. We'll let you know about that. We'll keep you updated. Also, let's see what else that we have to share with you. I think that's pretty much it. I do have with me brochures as always, I have the park schedule. There's always something to do in Wayne County. I have those with me. And on October the 13th, there will be a Halloween forest fun hike at Naked Mills Interpretive Center in Westland. And it begins at 6:00 p.m. And it's a hike, it's supposed to be spooky, but it really isn't. It's really kind of silly. And it's really kind of silly. But it's a fun opportunity that's free to take the children to and to enjoy the fall event. Also, a Halloween festival is scheduled for Saturday, October the 14th. And that's at the Naked Mills Park in Westland from 1:00 p.m. until 3:00. There's games, hay rides, and entertainment for children. And so those are other activities that will be good if you have children to take them to. They're free of charge and they're really very, very nice. And I do have the park schedules, if anyone would like one, before I leave. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them back to the commissioner if you have any.
Questions, questions, questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Moving right along, emergency sewer repair. We had mentioned this at the last meeting. We have a little short presentation by Jerome Bivens and Darren Carantin as to the issue we have with the sewers on the southeast side of the city.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, viewing audience and the audience here. As the mayor alluded to, I did address this council two weeks ago about a situation on Yale and Meadowdale with the sewer backup and overflow which flowed to the river, which caused the city to be in violation with polluting the river. Today, I'm just going to give you a brief overview of what has occurred and what action is. The city received a violation notice from the state of Michigan for an overflow discharge that occurred on September 13th, 2017. This event involved sanitary sewer spilling into the storm water, which then flowed into the Rouge River. This was caused by a restriction in the city sanitary sewer lying on Yale and Meadowdale. Under federal regulations, Clean Water Act, state regulations, et cetera, no longer allow sanitary discharge into a body of water such as the Rouge River. The city is now requesting to take some corrective action. And under this action, we're going to, as you can see, you see a white milky substance in the Rouge River. You see right there is our manhole where the river flows down Yale into the Rouge River. Like a lot of communities in southeastern Michigan, Inglewood water and sewer infrastructure was built a decade ago. The standard requirements and regulations for the federal and state government were much different at the time than they are today. A large part of the city, including Yale and Meadowdale, has combined sewers and storm pipe. Under normal conditions, this combined system is usually not a problem. However, rain events and restrictions can cause excessive flow, causing discharge to flow into the river. This site serves approximately 75% of Inglewood's south side homes and businesses. The sanitary and storm sewer share the same discharge pipe. What that means is that when you have sanitary and you have rainwater, it's all going into the same pipe and discharging to the river. That doesn't supposed to happen in this day and time. This arch, the manholes located approximately 1,000 to 1,200 feet apart on Yale Street at Yale and Meadowdale, there's a manhole. Next manhole we can get to to clean the sewer is at Beach Daily. So it's like 1,000 to 1,200 feet away. Our truck capacity for cleaning sewers has a hole of 600 feet. So it's obviously, we're not cleaning the whole line. The city has had ongoing communications with the Michigan Department of Environment, M D Q. The city received a cost estimate from our contractor for immediate, permanent repair. This is a high-priced preliminary solution. The price was over a million dollars. That's why the mayor said, it was over a million dollars. But understand, that was preliminary and that's the worst-case scenario. Working with the state to look at other alternatives to address this issue, the state has been receptive to this approach. Recent discussions with the state involved a short-term, low-cost option along with developing a comprehensive, long-term plan. The mayor and administration representatives will be meeting with the state officials the week of October the 9th and we will follow up with the council accordingly. Alright, I entertain if you've got any questions. But like I said, we will, the state is working with us. They have plans of the sewer design that we are not privileged to. So we will be going to Warren next week, the mayor, myself, Mr. Carantin, and our engineer, Mr. Tucker, to discuss. And they're willing to work with us, which we are very appreciative because they know our financial situation and they know a million dollars will put a strain on us. So I thank you guys if you have any questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Jerome, could it be more than a million dollars or less? That's like a ballpark figure you gave us?
That was the worst-case scenario. It's over a million.
Wow.
Yeah.
I mean, we're looking, the reason why we're meeting with the state is to explore other options. Can we do some fixes that maybe don't cost a million dollars? We know we have to address our infrastructure, the whole city at some point soon. We're an old city, just like many other cities. We're going to have to go out and borrow some major money to fix our roads and our pipes underneath our roads. There's no point in fixing the roads without fixing the pipes because you've got to dig up the road to get to the pipes.
Yeah, you got to do.
Everybody strap it up because we're going to spend some money soon.
Right.
Now, we're going to ask them, can we fix this temporarily until we come off that large money? And it's going to be a lot of money, a lot of money.
Yes, Mayor, pro tip.
A lot, I had a few calls from the citizens just trying to get some clarity. Now, a lot of them believed in the build of basins that it was going to help eliminate their basins from flooding. Could you explain what the basins are exactly for and that why it does not help stop their basins from flooding?
Well, it does. That's why the basins were built. The basins, actually what it does, it catches the rainfall. Well, it's not flooding at the rate it used to. When I first got here, on the average rain, the city of Inglewood had close to 750 homes flooding. The basin actually catches the water, cleans it, it discharges it to the county. The basin on Inglewood Road catches the water, clean it for five other communities. It's fed off of that one. Cleans it, it dispatches it to the county. So it's catching that rainwater and sending it on down the river, which then it's not getting into the sanitary system, causing basements to flood. So that's where it's helping us out.
Now, the issue that you said this on mainly, on Yale and Meadowdale, is that causing any of the basements to back up?
No, we haven't had any severe flooding issues over there for that reason, because of the combined sewer. Because when the sanitary gets full, it's dumping over into the storm, which is not going into people's basement backing up. But it's flowing down to the river, which is polluting the river, which we can't do.
I just got a call from a former council president, Vivian, that he thought that that was the reason why his basement was flooding, so just wanted to get that out.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep. Okay, now, we're at the favorite part of the meeting. We have our last presentation for the day. I think that's why a lot of people are here today, Joel Jones, all of us up here, we have to be here. But this is, we're going to do the presentation to the Cerseys. As you all know, the Cerseys are moving to Pennsylvania. We thought about shutting the whole city down because I can't imagine the city without the Cerseys being here. So we wanted to make sure we send them off and give them a proclamation, another, we have another frame, have a card for them. And of course, we have a cake. So all of y'all who came late, please eat more cake. I don't know if we trust the Cerseys with the knife, but we're going to cut the second cake. So everybody can eat the cake. So first, we got a couple of, President Joel, you want to come up? And who's getting this? Is this us?
Yeah, I'm going to read it from here.
Okay.
Well, hello again, everyone.
Hello.
And happy birthday too, sir.
Thank you.
How old are you? How old are you?
I didn't hear you. Say it again.
So we have, we have, we have the presentation right here from myself, from our state senator, from our lieutenant governor, and from the governor. And I'll go ahead and.
The Cerseys coming up?
Going to bring the Cerseys in?
You want to present?
Well, put that mic on top of that.
Why don't you get him, get him one of the mics? Get this one.
Yep, that one.
Now, if they just want to sit, we can bring chairs up.
That might be better since we have our presentation. You think that'll be better? You want them to sit up here?
You should go down.
See them go.
Yes, ma'am.
You should go down there.
You should go down there.
We can turn the chairs around so they can face the audience.
All of them?
Yes.
Have them sit right in the middle.
There we go. There we go.
Take, you want to take your hat off for that one?
Y'all alright?
Oh.
They good, they good. Alrighty, so here we go. State of Michigan special tribute to Charles and Jean Cersey. Let it be known that is with deep appreciation and gratitude, we bid farewell to Charles and Jean Cersey. Charles, a 55-year resident of the city of Inglewood, and his wife have resided on Hickory Street with their two children for 34 years. They are highly motivated volunteers who have supported the community in numerous ways through their political and social endeavors. Both Charles and Jean are very familiar faces at city council meetings and are among the first to immerse themselves in community concerns by championing important issues. Their unwavering dedication to progress within the city is extraordinary and will be difficult to replace. They are excellent examples of how good citizens can make positive contributions to the quality of life in their communities. Jean has been a faithful member and volunteer at the Middleburg Baptist Church for 20 years. In addition to her service at Middleburg Baptist Church as a senior saint, she has supported civic organizations, including the Commission on Aging, the Inglewood Citizen Action Network, the Inglewood Cleanup Coalition, Lehigh Center Crochet, Jury and Ceramics, St. Clement's Programs, and RSVP member. Jean also served the community for 30 years as an election expector at the polls and was a proud participant and awardee in the Senior Olympics. Charles and Jean's absence will be felt deeply by all who have had occasion to interact with them. They support numerous successful political campaigns and are staunch reliable pillars of the Inglewood community. For that, we are grateful. We bid them a fond farewell as they undertake a new chapter in their lives and we extend our gratitude and best wishes as they pursue their future endeavors. In special tribute therefore, this document is signed and dedicated to commemorate the exceptional contributions Charles and Jean Cersey have made as citizens of Inglewood, Michigan. May the future bring great success and good fortune as you all move to your new home.
Councilwoman Wiley. Councilwoman Wiley.
So.
They have to get this to you. There you go.
And they would also present them with a proclamation. Maybe he should just.
Well, I was.
I can't. I can't, I'm sorry. And then let them. He, I would do. I would. He has the.
What?
Get over here.
I was right there. Y'all should leave me alone.
Alright, one more. You still want to read ours?
She's going to read that.
I don't know. You can just present them with it because it's, no.
Okay, I'm not going to reread all the same information, so I'm going to present the Cerseys with our proclamation. You got a nice signature of the mayor there? That's for you. Got a comment for you. And then also Sandy Wiley made this up.
I didn't make that up.
Oh, yeah.
It's for them being ICANN-dedicated members since ICANN began.
When we come visit Joe, we better see that up on the wall.
Right, right. And what it is, is a triple I dedication, which means they are ICANN indispensable individuals.
This is everything. Now, Mr. Cersey, you got to cut the tape. Oh, you're, oh, wait, got to finish with that, one more.
I have a certificate of congratulations to you from the Wayne County Commission and they proudly recognize you, Audrey and Charles Cersey, for the work well done that you've done here in the city of Inglewood. You are just a good example for everyone to follow and your legacy will be left here in the city of Inglewood. And this certificate is signed by Commissioner Glenn Anderson, 12th District. We have all the information about your history and all of that. We're certainly not going to read that again, but we want you to know we honor you and we salute you today.
Alright.
Do you all have anything you want to say?
Anything you want to say?
I don't have to say anything.
Oh, come on, sweetie. I met a lot of nice people. I'm going to miss you. Thank you, Inglewood, for being here.
Mayor, maybe we shouldn't give the mic to Mr. Cersey.
We have to continue with the meeting, but feel free to ask for cake. We don't have a lot left, so grab a piece of cake, kind of a cersey. We don't need to all take some off. Y'all want to sit here the rest of the evening? Y'all wanna sit here the rest of the evening?
Yes, ma'am.
I just might as well stand here. Otherwise, I'll have to get a little...
Oh, yeah, true.
It's gotta keep going, I think.
Right.
A little sentimental, right?
Yeah, it's a...
Like I said, everybody go ahead and grab a piece of cake. We gonna push, push forward. We gonna continue talking, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Where to go?
The who was, I'm sorry.
Y'all wanna go ahead and? Everybody had a lucky chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Yes. Where's everybody at?
Okay, got it.
Kim's still here, just clapping for the guy.
Thank you. I'll get it right to the person.
Yeah, he, he was saying that everybody have a chance to look at the consent agenda.
Councilwoman Wiley. Right, right, right. Councilwoman Wiley. We need you to vote on stuff.
I, I, we ain't got nothing to vote on. Don't be trying that Jedi mind trick on me.
Alright, everybody look at... Can we, everybody had a chance to look at the consent agenda?
Yes. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Any changes? Is everything okay? Any emissions, deletions?
With that one, um, in the closed session, we have to add, yeah, I got it.
Yeah, we put that on.
Okay, okay.
We got a motion on the consent agenda to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
We probably move support, discussion? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Boards and commissions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint myself to the Parks and Rec Commission.
You appoint yourself.
No, we cannot.
Uh, Mayor Proton wants to appoint himself to the Parks and Recs Commission. Is that proper parliamentary procedure? Uh, will somebody help him out a little bit?
Well, what if we don't want him?
Yeah, that's a problem, man. He can't, nobody help him out.
I'd like to appoint Mayor Proton Williams to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Is there a limit to how many, um, commissions you can be on?
I don't think so. Is it David? Any limit?
It'd be effective.
He, he, he has nothing else to do. He's retired. Do we have a second?
Support, I mean, second.
That's good. We knew what you meant.
Oh, boy.
Okay, um, any discussion? Oh, no, wait a minute, do we need his resume?
Yeah, let's, let's vote on this next meeting.
Okay.
You gotta, you gotta be kidding.
He's unemployed, you go there.
No one's paying attention.
I got, I got 10 years of tenure right here.
Do you, do y'all have, y'all seen his resume?
I wouldn't take credit for that.
Y'all wanna violate the policy and go ahead? Oh, we're gonna vote next meeting?
It's already on file, right?
It's already on file.
Oh, yeah, you don't know the board to click.
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. It passes. Any other nominations?
Ever may be in there? You know, I think the chair, her, uh... I'm serious. They're doing the district line, uh...
When we get on the bill?
Do we have any other from last meeting? Do we have any? Any, I don't think so. Any other nominations? Okay. Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir.
Clarence has some.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate April...
Opal.
Opal, I'm sorry, Nolan to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Can we do that? Why can't?
He's nominating her, so we just need to get her.
Okay.
Wasn't there something last?
Uh, isn't there something about people's?
Relatives.
Yeah, I don't know if we can do that.
But you know what? I don't understand that, because I wanted my husband to be a part of the Inglewood Historical Commission, simply because he's been a lifelong resident of the city of Inglewood, and I was told that he could not sit on that commission, which has nothing to do with what I do as a councilperson. So I don't, I don't understand blocking, and these people still are citizens of the city of Inglewood, and actually, you take away their right to participate when you do that. So if that's a part of the charter, then we need to revisit that, have the attorney revisit it, because that's a problem for me when citizens who by happenstance are relatives of someone in the city government are, uh, not given an opportunity to serve the city in those capacities.
Spin them aside.
That, that has been part of the existing charter. Prior to charter revision, um, it violates having relatives, first-degree relatives, sit on boards and commissions and/or be employed by the city of elective officials. Now, because I'm not as intimately familiar with the new, all of the new charter provisions, I have to check, but I think it's also part of the revised charter.
Yeah, it may be.
Yeah.
But in matters of, um, business, let's say, for example, if, um, something came before the commission that said this person wanted to do business through that commission or whatever, then I would not be able to vote in that matter, because it would be a conflict of interest, and everyone has to sign a conflict of interest waiver. So we really need to look at that, because now you're keeping the mayor's mom from sitting on a commission, uh, and my husband has been denied the opportunity to sit on a commission. And again, they are citizens of this city. They have that right. And just because I sit here, it should not keep them from exercising that right.
If I could just speak, um, Mrs. Owens just pointed out the section, and there is a caveat. The Section 512 Anti-Nepotism starts off that says, "Unless the city council shall determine by a majority vote of its members that the best interests of the city shall be served, the following relatives and their spouses, spouses of any elective official or spouse are disqualified from holding any appointed office or employment of the city of Inglewood within the same department or under direct supervise, supervision and control of the elective official during the term of office of said official." So essentially, they're saying you can bypass that part of the charter with a majority vote of council. So if someone were to nominate the mayor's mother or your husband to a department such as Parks and Rec, which is under direct supervision of the city council, it can be overcome by a majority vote of the council. So it doesn't need to be rewritten. If it's that important and someone thinks it's in the best interest that those persons serve, a majority vote will permit it.
I guess we need a majority vote for anybody to get on the board of commission anyway, right?
Right, if they're related.
Well, you need it either way, right?
That's just the way it operates, period.
So really, it's that, that provision is meaningless.
Right.
If you get a majority vote. Okay, well, any other nominations as a result of that reading that we'll take up at next meeting? Do you wanna re-nominate your husband?
Sure. Now?
Yeah.
Oh. Uh, I nominate George Mitchell Senior to be, um, a member of the Inglewood Historical Commission.
Support.
Okay, we'll vote on that next meeting after we get the, the questionnaire and the resume.
Right.
Okay. Any other nominations?
Did I send it in?
I was about to say, we don't have it.
We voted on it before and, and it was denied on those grounds.
Oh, we asked you to vote?
So, yeah, well, you told me no.
Because of the nepotism.
Because of the nepotism, but now we have a better definition, so. But I'll do it again. It's on the computer. I can just shoot it off, no problem.
Alright.
Moving on.
Are we considering Nolan?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Well, she probably has to fill out the paperwork. Okay, we'll move on. Any other boards and commissions? Okay, we'll move on to first reading. I'm sorry, previous business district-wide advisory meeting? There's a change of the date necessary, I take it? Somebody brought this up?
Yes, sir, I brought to the, I brought it up. Um, when we chose the date, we, um, hit the day after the holiday. We had a meeting on Tuesday, Monday, and Councilperson Howard wasn't here to, uh, participate at that time, so she's not here on Tuesdays. So, um, that's how, at that time, I asked if we have an alternative day. I just wasn't quite sure why, but seeing that she needs to have her group here as well, uh, can we move the date to a Monday instead of the Tuesday? We had set for October the 10th at the moment, a Tuesday.
Yeah, so you wanna do it next Monday?
Not available next Monday.
Okay, what Monday is?
If this is gonna be a problem, I can just have someone from my group, if that's okay, um, that's...
Is that okay by the charter? I don't, I haven't really looked that hard at it.
Well, I, over the 9th would be planning commission, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I think we actually are having a meeting next week too, right? Adriana? Okay, right now, we don't have anything, so maybe not planning commission.
Alright.
That's, that's on the 9th?
But someone's not available on the 9th, right?
I'm not available on 9th or the 23rd.
What about the 30th, anybody?
That's the fifth Monday of the month.
I'm available on the 30th. You hurry up and capture it for me.
Y'all wanna do the 30th?
I'm good for the 30th.
October.
October 30th.
It's the day before Halloween. Any parties that day? Craig, we got, what's our Halloween party? Huh? Okay, we, okay. Alright, so the 30th?
Mm-hmm.
We need a motion?
What time?
6 o'clock?
Location?
Of course.
Commissioner, we have the all-district battery meeting here on October 30th at 6 o'clock.
Report. Uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to the second reading ordinances.
A second reading and approval on the reversion of the B-12 Thoralfair Mixed Use District conditional rezoning of two parcels back to R1-A, one-family residential. The parcels are located on the north side of Lehigh, just east of Inglewood Road.
We have a motion to approve? Don't move. Support. We probably move supported, discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to make sure that this is going back to where it was before we voted to change the zoning, and that it's not stepping back into a way to block what we thought we were gonna have.
It's going back, it's reverting back to original zoning.
Original zoning only, okay.
Any other, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? It passes.
A second reading and approval of text amendment TA 17-11 to the city's zoning ordinance pertaining to provisions for site plan and special land use reviews per the recommendation of the planning commission.
Okay, President, properly moved. Any support?
Support.
And properly supported, uh, discussion?
What exactly?
It was in your last packet of many. It's just revisions to the site plan review process. Ms. Jordan, you wanna give her the highlights?
Yes, please, I was gonna ask for that.
Sure. So basically, what these revisions are trying to do is to streamline the site plan review process, make it a little bit easier for applicants and more straightforward, um, as well as some of the, the special land use, um, time periods are being aligned with the site plan review, uh, time periods, so that those are also very clear. Because there were currently some discrepancies in the code from different portions of the code that were written during different time periods.
So this is a way to clean up that?
That's correct.
Any other discussion or questions, comments? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Item A under new business is to vote in accordance with the vote that was taken in closed session, Vassar. So move.
Support.
We probably move supported, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Public participation. It is Monday night football, y'all. When we started this meeting, I said we're gonna be done by 7:30.
I'm boycotting.
Uh, it didn't work out. So, we got a first, uh, participant is Deborah Owens.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On Tuesday, September 19th, um, a team helped me to clean up the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex. Many of us cleaned for six to eight hours, and we still need to clean again, so I'll be organizing more cleanup. So look for, um, an opportunity to help make the city better by helping us clean the Booker Dozier Recreation Complex up. I want to thank the following people for their hard work and/or donations and/or cleaning supplies and refreshments. Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson, Lady Theola Jones, Opal Nolan, Lady Mabel Strowman, Councilman Clarence Oden Jr., Delmar Fisher, who's not even an Inglewood resident. Uh, he lives in Ypsilanti, but he's a member of the Middle Belt Baptist Church. Gabe Henderson, Lady Andrea Chapman, Lady Rochelle Wells, Lady Rosalyn Gibson, Lady Jackie Jones, and Lady Christie King. Uh, we had a lot of support from the top ladies of Distinction Metro Chapters, so that's why we had such a successful cleanup. Thank you so much, team, for your hard work, donations and community spirit, in striving to make the city of Inglewood a better place to live. Um, I wanted to ask the question additionally. Is the cost of a professional cleaning company to clean the Booker Dozier Recreation Center built into the budget, the recreation complex budget?
No.
It needs to be. We need to have professional cleaners up there. We need to have someone to love that building. That is the only building that we have to recreate in. The seniors recreate there, the children recreate there. We need a professional cleaner to clean that building. And, and, and I know we need a park, and I'm not knocking that, but that building is very valuable to us, and we need a professional cleaner. So I would hope that you all would seriously take a look at that and get someone up there to clean that building on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, didn't we just hire somebody, 'cause we got rid of Miss Gil, and then we hired another company out of, up north to clean that place?
Yeah, but it's particular areas that, that need a little attention, though.
No, but I'm saying, we hired some.
Okay, okay, we'll do that.
Didn't, did we or didn't?
Yes, we did.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, Shirley Shockley.
Thank you, Mayor Nolan and Council. I'm gonna say this real fast. I worked in Inglewood Public Schools, um, when I first came out of graduate school. And I was appalled at how they looked, 'cause I didn't go to schools that looked like that. And I remember being out of order going to the Board of Education meeting, and it had rained or snowed or something, and teachers had buckets in their classroom to catch the rain. So I went to the Board of Education meeting, and I was out, I was told I was being out of order because employees were not supposed to talk to the board, but I asked them how they expected children to learn in that kind of environment. And at the time, Ed Beverly told me that if they fixed the school up, the kids wouldn't do anything but tear it up. When I hear that capital maintenance is not built into stuff, that bothers me, and I don't know how we forget to do that. Anyway, they did wind up fixing the school up, uh, and the kids started telling on people who messed their school up. So I just wanna say, we have to build in stuff to keep our stuff right. Okay, I was gonna talk about the park, and I really appreciate you all reconsidering, um, what I asked. I do have quite a few signatures on a petition, so I guess it's my job now to send out little note cards to all those people who sign those petitions, and that's a lot of people. It's a lot of people. I walk the streets myself to get most of those signatures. I was encouraged, because when children would hear me asking their parents to sign the petition, they start jumping up and down in the back. Yay, yay, we gonna get a park. But I needed to say that I could've just had one sentence in that letter that I wrote back in... But I needed to say that I could have just had one sentence in that letter that I wrote back in July. And that one sentence was, children shouldn't have to endanger their lives to have recreation. That came from a place that my grandson used to play with a little boy named Jonathan, who lived around the corner from me. I don't know which house he lived in, I knew his mother's face, I don't remember her name. Jonathan was eight, my grandson turned twenty-eight August thirtieth. That was twenty years ago that Jonathan got killed crossing Middle Belt. And that was when I made a commitment to try to have a park for kids in my area. So, the reason I've been so passionate about it is because after I read the letter, and I went home, I was very sad, because I started thinking about Jonathan again. And as a tribute to him, I'd like to buy a tree for the park, if I could, to remind myself not to take twenty years again to try to get something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend George Williams.
He said he still had enough.
You, you didn't turn this in? Oh, maybe this is somebody else, Reverend Williams on Helen Street. It's two of y'all? I don't think we handled two of y'all. I was just messing with you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I just want to make mention, um, my wife and I, we've been going through some situation with our home, and we've been asking help from, um, the police force, and we asked, um, for, we sent a, uh, police report out, and, um, the detectives never showed up to our home. So then we kind of complained about it, trying to, you know, to find out what was going on. And, um, we complained about it to find out what's going on, and, um, two detectives did come, but I wasn't present, but they were very rude with my wife. And, and you know, we had no resolution concerning our report, and so, you know, um, my wife gave some information, and I'm just hoping that you can look at it. We do need the help, well, we've been suffering for, for, for the past couple of years, my wife lost her job, and being disabled and sick, and we've just been trying to get some help. And, um, people have been messing with our phone lines, and it's all, we think, the company that she worked for, and it's just, um, we've just been trying to get the help that we need, and so we just came to council meeting today, just to make mention of it, that, you know, um, detectives came out to our, our home, one, they didn't come out first, but then when they did come out, they were very rude.
And when was this?
They were unannounced, you know, it wasn't like it was pre-planned, so I could be there to talk to them. Um, this happened, um, I want to say about, how long ago, about six months ago?
Oh, six months ago?
Roughly about July, roughly about three months ago.
Okay, I will look into it tomorrow and find out what I can, and we will contact you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
No, no problem.
His name is Paul Sidoo.
Paul? Oh, okay, I couldn't read the, how you pronounce your last name?
Sidoo.
Sidoo, okay, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council and the citizens.
Okay.
So, so first of all, I mean, it's very nice to see there are a lot of wonderful things going on in the city. I have a little problem that, uh, I own this house on thirty-five twenty-four John Daly.
Okay.
The last, in the last three, four years, city has, uh, city of Inxter has put approximately six thousand dollars of water bills on my taxes, and I, I just paid a bill of, uh, eleven forty-six today. See, the, once the city, city's policy is after thirty days, after thirty days, the city's policies are thirty day past you, you're supposed to cut the water off. But in this case, the last case happened, the water was turned off on April thirteenth, two thousand and sixteen. That's, that, that's more than a year and a half, uh, half ago, and the water bills, they just kept on just adding to the taxes and, and to me.
Are you living in the house?
No, I don't.
You know what, do you have people in the house?
Yes, the, the tenant was living there, I went to the, the, I was advised by the, uh, clerk's office, go to the police department, make a police report, the water has been shut off, there should be no use. I went to the police department, they said in city of Inxter, water theft is a, is a civil matter.
True, but did, did your tenants have water in the house, is the question? Because if they cut the water on illegally, it still applies through the meter, and then we, you will still get a bill, I'm not saying that happened, I don't know. I'm just asking, they were living there with no water for the last year and a half, sums up. I mean, they couldn't take a bath, they couldn't drink water, I mean.
No, 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 that, no, that's true, but the thing is, the, somebody using water illegally, how, how that, you could charge it legally, you could charge the property owner?
Yeah, well, if the water, if the water goes through the meter.
No, that's true, mayor, that's okay, but the thing is, the illegal action of somebody, when, by, by the city policy, when, when you have a, unless you change your city's policy saying that there water theft or no theft, as long as the, somebody's living in the house, we will bill it to the property owner. See, that, see, that's not, you cut it off, the, you, the city cuts the water off due to non-payment, this is your own policy.
I got you.
And it's, it's very clear for you guys to collect, see, the thing is, one person's criminal act, you cannot charge it from, to the property owner. And there, there is, there is another.
Then you, then you're a tenant.
No, see, see, those tenants didn't even pay me.
I know, but you gotta understand, we have to hold somebody responsible.
I, I know, but, but it's very easy, it's very easy for the, I could provide you the information. The city as a government has the authority to intercept their federal tax, federal, uh, tax refund, you guys could collect the money, money tomorrow from them. But the thing is, I cannot, I don't have any option, I, I got these against.
You can put them out your house.
Say again?
You can put them out, evict them.
No, I, I did, but the thing is, the water bills still got on me, it's more, it's more than six thousand dollars.
But when you, when you evict someone, you can sue them for whatever they owe you.
But, Mr. Mayor, if you cannot collect a dime from somebody, what, what, what that judgment is going to be?
Mister, Mister Sidoo, Mister Sidoo, your, your time is up.
Okay, okay, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I mean, you can contact Carrington if you want to discuss any further traffic. Gabe Henderson?
Thank you.
Oh, boy. Good evening, family, how's everybody doing today?
How you doing, Mrs. Henderson?
Um, before you, you know, I want to say, you know, saying behind every great, uh, man is a great, uh, is a good woman. Behind every, you know, uh, great woman is a good man, and they're talking about Sirs, Mr. Sirs, he's a good old guy, you know? We all love him, you know? We support, okay, I'm here, uh, again with the Inxter Goodfellas, uh, we're having our pancake breakfast, okay, it's coming up. And it's at the Booker Dozier Recreation Center, twenty twenty-five Middle Belt Road, Inxter, Michigan, it's gonna be Saturday, October the twenty-first, from seven AM to twelve PM. Okay, ten bucks. Yeah. That's a waffle with chicken right there, no, but.
Do you have chicken too?
Twenty-first?
Well, you, you know what? I had some pecans specially for a guy waiting for him, because he said he want pecans on his pancake.
Pecans on the pancake?
Never showed up, never showed up.
Um, that's a different event, that's a different event.
Yeah, let's go.
Yeah, because the chicken and waffles is for chicken.
Anyway, the benefit proceeds for No Child Without a Christmas, this is one of our major fundraises that we have, may, uh, raised money for the kids for Christmas time. And, uh, like I said, it's gonna be, uh, okay, October the twenty-first, from seven AM to, uh, twelve PM, we got pancake sauces, bacon, uh, grits, uh, coffee, juice. So it was always a good event for family to come out, you know, see folks and all that, break some bread. And I hope, uh, people show up, we need the help. And I, I want to thank, you know, uh, also about the, uh, parks, uh, tried to redevelop our park. Another thing, you know, our block club, like I said, we've been always active, you know, and trying to develop that, redevelop that park now. And there was something said about, you know, some matching funds, you know, that could be given for any organization to try to help. And I think a lot of block clubs, you know, they, when they, you know, in certain areas where they, uh, live, they, they, the parks and all, they get together and all that, and try to have some events, raise some money, if they can get something that matches fun. And, you know, like they were saying, if you build, you know, the park, you know, they'll come, and, uh, and I, I think we're gonna always try to do all we can for the, for the kids in our community, you know, you know, one thing, us folks, you know, who are in, I say, middle zone, we always gotta, you know, uh, of course, watch out for the young folks and try to take care, and watch out for the old folks to try to take care, you know? We had the ability, we had the time, we had the strength and the love, and I, I love y'all all, and, um, and I think it's, there's on the road for greater things to come. Inxter always, we ain't never had a whole lot of money, I think we got a whole lot of heart and caring, and, and we, we show that, and we, we work together, and we're gonna get a whole lot done. We're gonna get all that, and I'm proud of y'all, and I love y'all.
I respect that.
And that's all I have to say. God bless you.
God bless you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's about all.
Ricky Larkin?
Good evening, I'm not gonna take up a lot of time.
Okay.
Uh, and I'm not gonna do a whole lot of complaining, but, uh, tonight, but I'm just really looking for direction. Um, I'm, I'm a resident of Justine and Riverview area, uh, I really try to take care of that, that little neighborhood there. Ever since that bike trail, it, it's been a straight nuisance to us. Uh, they've been cutting through there, and they, they've learned that there's a couple of empty houses there. Uh, they, they're using it for, uh, drugs, trafficking, but whatever. Um, police have made plenty of runs there, uh, the, the, the code enforcement has, uh, put them out, tried to make them put the boards back up. I looked into trying to find out who owns the property, so I can purchase them, um, whoever owns, they've been empty for like over ten years. They just ran over, but whoever owns them is paying the taxes on them. So, yes, I got the paperwork here, I got pictures and everything, but what I'm trying to find out, what can I do? Or what can we do, uh, to, to, to make possibly whoever owns them do something to them? Um, it, it, you know, it's just, it, it's, police is constantly there, and that street was very, very, it's a deadened street, quiet.
What's the addresses of the bacon house?
Uh, twenty-five oh four Justine, and the other is?
Twenty-five sixteen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it, we go, we'll, we'll check until you say people own it, they're paying the taxes, what can we do, okay, it's a tough one, but.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I'm sorry?
It's a tough one, because if they own the property and paying the taxes, and it's boarded up.
Right. Can I show you this?
Well, that's a violation, that, that's a code violation. What's the code?
Now, now it's still in the society, you know?
Oh, yeah.
So now it's got, you know, and, and I constantly try to take care of that neighborhood, they were walking down in that part, uh, that bike trail, shooting. And I, they did, and I figured that out, I nipped that in the bud, so I'm trying, you know, to keep this thing.
I will type over, Tess, you get those addresses? You got it? Okay, cool, thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Alright. Octavia Smith?
Good evening, mayor and council, um, residents, friends, a few, um, announcements. First of all, we want to make sure that you are aware that the Inxter Task Force five K run is Saturday, October the twenty-eighth. And now the price have went up five dollars, so it's thirty-five dollars to register, but you have until the twenty-seventh. If you register by then, it's still thirty-five dollars, on the day of the race, it's forty dollars. So we asking all of our council members, our residents, our friends to sign up for the five K, it's gonna be a wonderful event. Then for the Inxter Chamber of Commerce, we, you know, we have our calendar ad, do everyone have a calendar? For any of this chamber, this is the last year or this year's calendar, but I just want to note that in this calendar on October the ninth is a special day, which is my birthday, and I hope y'all. Remember that day, give me a call on my birthday.
Let her wear your hat.
But these ads, okay, but these ads, um, are going on until October thirty-first, so please, council, crick, police, fire, put a little ad into the Chamber of Commerce, this is our business calendar, so please help us with that. Also, from Western Wayne Family Health Center, we always like to welcome you all to come down and check out our providers, our dental staff, our behavior health specialists, and also to welcome you to Zumba on Wednesdays and indoor walking and yoga on Mondays, both of them are six to seven, free of charge, so please stop by and see us. And, we also want to put on a call to action to all of our business and residents, that we clean up our city. If you see trash on the street, please pick it up, let's clean up, and we can only do this ourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Officer Lebo?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Happy birthday, Councilman Nolan. Alright, first I want to start off, got a few announcements, um, October twentieth, and hopefully you have not forgotten about IPAL. We did not go anywhere, we've just been having some trouble cutting through the red tape, fortunately, making some progress. Um, and, uh, October twentieth, we are going to be having a fundraising.
Fish fry.
Fish fry, thank you, see, thank you, see, this guy's got it for me. Um, we're gonna be having a fish fry October twentieth, um, we're going to be from twelve o'clock until six PM, ten dollars, we'll have three, three different types of fish to choose from, as well as a number of sides. Ten dollars, come in, you can do a carryout, you can sit and eat with us, whatever you choose, I will happen to forget my flyers on my desk when I left, but I will have flyers throughout the city, hopefully by the end of the week. Um, next, the, our last movie night, I would like to extend a thank you to Father Clifton and Saint Clement's Episcopal Church, he donated almost three hundred hot dogs, and we were able to have some hot dogs to enjoy with our movie, um, so thank you. October thirteenth is our last and final movie night, it's going to be Halloween themed, we're gonna be watching It's a Great Pumpkin Charlie Brown, as well. We're going to be coloring pumpkins, as well as giving out candy, and we are going to be having a raffle. Say thank you to everybody who has supported us throughout the summer, we're gonna be raffling off some bikes, as well as some other smaller items for the children. Um, I encourage everyone to come, please dress up if you feel the need, it's gonna be a little Halloween themed, so October thirteenth, probably gonna start, because we're coloring the pumpkins and the raffle around seven o'clock, October thirteenth, seven o'clock. Um, what's that? Are you dressing up as the Great Pumpkin?
He's got some orange clothes on, I see.
He does, absolutely, you just see him, we're a mile away. Oh, that's great. Um, I do have to say that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, so I noticed a lot of our men are wearing the nice little pink ties, I appreciate your support. Women over forty, please, 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 get your mammograms, it is a necessity, not, it's not something you want to take lightly, so get your mammograms in. Also, um, last Wednesday, we had the first Ink Town Pedal Push, I'm sure that Councilman Chisholm will be addressing it, I participated and I had so much fun. Hey, I cannot wait for the next one, uh, just to be able to ride through that bike trail was really awesome, and I encourage everyone to please come to the next one. It was a great time, good way to get your cardio in, we even picked some apples off the trees and, uh, in the park, and we ate them, and they were delicious.
And nobody got sick?
Nobody got sick, thank you, Ms. Nolan. Um, one last thing, uh, recently, we've had a lot of people approaching me wanting to start block clubs, that's amazing. Um, Stolman recently started a block club, uh, Sherborne wants to start a block club, if you are interested in starting a block club, please approach me, we are more than happy, happy to help you out, get you off the ground, and get you on the way to going. You know, this, um, we gotta come together as a community, one way to do that is to get to know your neighbors, and a block club is a great way to make that happen, so, thank you all, I will see you later.
Officer Lebo?
I apologize, the fish fries, of course, at the Booker Dozer, from twelve o'clock, oops, from twelve noon to six PM.
Alright, Pastor Gene Overman.
I do like Monday night football. Okay, so, good evening to all, mayor, council, and administrators. Of this Sunday, at five PM is the NAACP Western Wayne County Branch, uh, twenty seventeen Freedom Fund Dinner. Want to take the opportunity to invite all, I still have tickets. Those of you that I need to get ticket money from, I need it this week. Our keynote speaker is the Honorable Deborah A. Thomas, the Judge of the Third Circuit Court of Michigan. It is at Stephans in Reford. The tickets are one hundred dollars, which includes a one-year membership. Also, as many of you know, I do a lot of ministry abroad, and our ministry in Puerto Rico has had a lot of difficulties. I'm headed there on the twenty-third. What we're doing is collecting things like batteries and flashlights, um, radios, lanterns, and if anyone has a connection with the folks with the TARP place right over on Beach Daily, we need TARPs. Yeah, so if there's a connection there, I would love an introduction. I'll be leaving the twenty-third, uh, to go down to Puerto Rico for a while. So if you can help, would love help, we have a drop-off box at Operation Refuge Mother's Pantry. So that's it. Thank you very much, if you have ticket money, please make sure you give it to me. Inkster Task Force in particular, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like a check for two hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, uh, Councilwoman Wiley?
Thank you. No, I don't have any items, thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
No items.
No more, no more presentations for you two? Councilwoman Wiley?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce to District Three that we'll be having our advisory meeting, um, on the Thursday, the twenty-sixth, at five PM, at the Inkster Fire Department on Michigan Avenue. Um, that's the meeting for the entire district. What we'll be doing at that time is there'll be fire personnel there to tell you what's expected, when you call, when they respond, and things of that nature. I found it's a lot easier if people know the procedure of things prior to them actually having to interact with certain things. So you'll get a better understanding of what your fire department does, and your fire department will get a better understanding of your expectations. So Fri- uh, Thursday, the twenty-sixth of October, at five PM, the Advisory Board Meeting will be at the Inkster Fire Department, and I would like to thank Chief Hubbard for allowing this to happen. Appreciate you very much. I'd like to also let people know that the Inkster Citizen Action Network, I-C-A-N, will be having their I-Candy Convoy on October thirty-first. Now, the I-Candy Convoy is where we, uh, everybody has a party for the kids, but there are some kids that don't have a way to get to the party. So what I-C-A-N does is we have a little convoy, we fill up with candy in our cars, and we go through the various projects and, uh, um, homes and things of that nature, and we let the kids trick or treat out of our cars. Now, it's not like a trunk or treat, because you have to go to that tube. We actually go to the, um, the, uh, complex, thank you, and, uh, let them trick or treat out of our trunk. We play crazy, eerie music, and we yell trick or treat. We just have a really good time, I'm not gonna lie to you, I have a good time. I dress up, okay? So, um, we're going to start at the, uh, Burger, Baylor, Woodson Community Center that's located at Carlisle and Middle Belt. And we'll be there, um, at five PM, and from there, we go to Lamone, then we go to Parkside, then we go to Denvy, then we go to all the others, and end up at Dartmouth. Now, whatever we haven't given away at that time, we go to the rec center and, uh, drop whatever's left off there, so the kids can trunk or treat out of that. So anyone interested in joining us, like I said, it'll be at five PM, we'll be meeting at Middle Belt and Carlisle, and it's the I-Candy Convoy, I have a lot of fun with it. Uh, the third thing is, um, we're looking, the ordinance officers and I have been working on ordinances, revamping the ordinances since January fifth. And we've gotten about eight or nine completed, or in a process where they become law. Now, these are to help them better do their jobs. So we're looking for a couple of volunteers, citizen volunteers, who are interested in working with us to add that component to what we're already doing. Because a lot of times, you can be sitting here, and we are looking at it from our vantage point, but a citizen may have something to offer. Now, we just, um, had a couple citizens working with us, and we're looking for a couple more. So if you are interested, you can contact either myself, or Officer Wall, or Officer Triplet, or Terrance, if you want to become part of that. We meet every Friday at, uh, eleven o'clock, and we work on ordinances. Now, there's one other thing, I believe at the last meeting, I said that, uh, we were waiting on the attorney to send back the vicious dog, uh, ordinance we were working on, and that wasn't quite true. So I want to, I appreciate him for not outing me, because he really didn't have it. He has it now, though, okay? He really didn't have it, and I appreciate him not outing me, as I would have outed him had I had left. So, uh, that would be it for me, Mayor.
Birthday boy.
Very funny. Let me, let me start out by saying, um, thank you to all the council members, uh, people here in the community, for, uh, your support during the difficult time due to the loss of my father-in-law. I, I appreciate you coming to my support. I appreciate those people here in the community as well, uh, he was well-known in the community, and I want to just say thank you to all of you, uh, because, uh, he was well-known, and it was a outpouring of love. Uh, I also like to say that, um, a while back, Commissioner Anderson came before the council, and he discussed and talked about the lights at Cherry Hill and Inkster Road. And I'd just like to say that he has done what he said he's gonna do. They've, they've started to hang the wires for the new lights to come up. You remember, we were talking about the, the lights right there, that location a while back? And, uh, I think steps have been taken already for that process to happen and for it to be completed. So I want to say thank you to him and his representative. He was also, uh, there, uh, and, and I think he was talking about it before he finally came before us to, uh, to actually deal with it. So that's all that I have. Oh, and I'm sorry, I want to thank my colleagues here for the birthday gifts that were very funny, thanks to the mayor. But I appreciate it, and I, I say thank you to each one of you.
And those of you who are not here for the orientation meeting, please ask Councilman Odom after meeting what he got for his birthday. He's gotta show you his gift, you gonna love him. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
A few announcements, tomorrow evening, uh, the District Six Advisory Council will meet at Gracie C's Pastoria, we're gonna have dinner and fun. So that's at six o'clock tomorrow evening, that's for District Six. But anyone is invited and, and welcome to come to the, uh, the meeting. Um, on Wednesday, the DDA Strategic Plan Committee will meet at six o'clock in the Tiffa Room, which is down in this, this room. We are currently working on, um, a needs assessment of what we are calling a participatory evaluation. So that when we are ready to really start pouring money into building our downtown, we know what to put there, because you want it there, and you say you will patronize it. So, uh, I would like to invite anyone who's a citizen or not a citizen, because we want everybody to come into Inkster and do what they want to do, um, to come to the Strategic Plan Committee, Committee Meeting tomorrow night, I mean, Wednesday night, at six o'clock in the Tiffa Room here. Finally, on October twenty-sixth, at eleven o'clock AM, there will be our annual senior forum sponsored by the Inkster Task Force, uh, the Commission on Aging Senior Services, and assisted by top ladies of distinction. This year, our guest speaker will be Treasurer, Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabree. Uh, we are hoping that he will bring good information for seniors regarding homeownership and how to avoid pitfalls and scams along that, uh, that line. So that will be October twenty-sixth at eleven. You will get, you've already gotten information through the senior citizens, uh, newsletter, but there will be some other communications sent out, so that you can put that date on your calendar. And that's all I have right now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Howe?
Afternoon, Mr..
Councilman Chisholm?
Good evening. Uh, just piggybacking on what Officer Lebo said, we did start the Ink Town Pedal Push last Wednesday, we had a great time. It grew overnight. Um, the Facebook post gained a lot of attention. I have been in communication with Councilwoman Mitchell, just telling her about everybody who was hitting me up all of a sudden out of nowhere, even though we announced it, I guess they didn't think we were gonna do it and bring it to fruition, to fruition, but we did. And so I'm looking at doing it again this Wednesday, six PM, and just continuing until the weather, um... prohibits us from doing so. I mean, I, hey, I would have to work in it, so I dress whatever, as warm as I can, and I'll be out there if you guys want to be out there in the snow. It don't matter to me. But, um, we're gonna start at six, just because of daylight, we can go to whatever. I done got the headlight and the rear, uh, brake light on my bike, so we can ride all the way into the dark. So long as you game, I'm game. Just see...
What do you start from?
We're gonna start again, oh, yes, and please note the wonderful pictures right there on both of the screens here, thank you Troy for that. Troy was out there with us, he was with the drone, I want to see those aerial shots, because after he couldn't keep up with us anymore, he had to just keep going higher and higher. So I want to see how that's gonna look in the future. That's something that we can use to really promote our city and let people know that we have a bikeable community. And, uh, you are encouraged to use your bikes to go to the businesses and everything. Um, we're gonna meet back up again at Inkster Park. There's different routes we could take, once we leave Inkster Park, which is right off of John Daly, just north of Michigan Avenue. We rode the bike trails to the end, and then we turned around and came back, it ends right there at Justine Street, so I was able to kind of see what citizens have been talking about with people with motorized, uh, vehicles, like motorcycles and stuff, coming through there and just, you know, going through and everything. So I kind of understand and feel the pain, frustration that they're going through. Um, but yeah, just see me for the packet, anything like that, or your city clerk's office. And I hope to see you at six PM at Inkster Park on Wednesday. Uh, Mr. Hargreaves, one of our centennials of the city, he has made his transition, he was one hundred and one years old. His funeral, uh, services will be on Tuesday, there will be a viewing from two PM to seven PM at In Funeral Home, with a vigil before burial at six PM. The services will be at Saint Clement's Episcopal Church on Wednesday, October fourth, at eleven AM, and the family hour slash viewing at that time will be from ten AM to ten fifty-five AM. The tournament will take place at Mount Hope Memorial Gardens. Um, and piggybacking on what Councilman Odom was saying, the light on Inkster Road and Cherry Hill. I rode through there as I was working, and I saw the county was working, I was like, let there be light. They've already changed the pedestrian signals and everything, and got the new and improvements up there. So just waiting to see how this project is gonna be once it turns out. We're very excited, because it's too long that it's, uh, been an issue there. And my last thing was today, after making my runs, I got home and had some debt collector papers in the mail from, uh, entity that I've never had any services with. Um, so I just wanted to alert everyone to be on the lookout, because it looks official, but then when you start actually looking at it, it looks like somebody typed it in Microsoft Word, just hit print and send it. And I'm like, wait a minute. So I drafted a nice email and emailed them, and told them I wanted to see their hierarchy. I want the CEO's information, everybody, because if they can't provide me with that information, I know it's something of not, it's not authentic. So I just want to alert everyone of that. They told me I owed like twelve hundred dollars, something like that, and they're about to pursue with lawsuit, with a lawsuit, and I'm like, well, sue me then, because we're just gonna have to go that route. But I just want to alert everyone that's watching and everyone in the crowd, because we know how breaches have been going on with technology and everything, and we just want everybody to be safe. Thank you.
Mayor Protrin?
Thank you. Um, I want to remind everyone that Inkster Citizens of Care, uh, sponsored a luncheon on October the fourteenth, eleven thirty. Uh, they're doing a chicken and waffle luncheon, and our proceeds are going for a coast for kids. Be held at the, uh, Park and Rest Complex, uh, in the, uh, multi-purpose room. Um, I had another con, but I'll wait till later. But other than that, continue to shop Inkster, and, um, I know that some people have been asking me about, uh, where is there to shop? There are, we do have businesses that we do have in Inkster, but what I want to say is, support the ones that support you. So, I'm gonna leave it at that. Thank you.
Just real quickly, um, a couple weeks ago, I had a chance to go to Washington DC and represent our city at the Legislative Black Caucus, uh, had our opportunity to have now with some of our, uh, federal representatives, Debbie Stavonaw, Gary Peters, uh, Brenda Lawrence, and I'm gonna get those folks, uh, Brenda, uh, Gary Peters and, uh, Debbie Stavonaw agreed to come to Inkster. We don't, we very rarely see them in our city, but they do, they do represent us. So I got them to agree to come to Inkster, uh, to visit us, either at a council meeting, go around town, meet some of the residents and some business owners. So I'll let you know what date, once I get an actual date confirmation, because they need, we need to interact with our representatives and let them know what we want them to do. So I'll be doing that, and also, the last thing, I'll miss the Searces. I love you guys, we'll, we'll come visit, and so we'll see you soon, so you, um, you won't be getting rid of us that easy.
Right, we got your address.
All right, that's all I have. Good job. So move, boy. Probably move supportive, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I need you to run.
I need to collect for my wine tasting.
You're out of order.